Yes, so did you bring a, uh, one that we can engage on the PowerPoint?
Okay.
More stuff.
We have some more stuff here to look at, yes.
Park.
So these two ladies are going to hand out to you a copy of the PowerPoint presentation they put together to discuss our annual renewal of our healthcare packages.
Thank you.
And they're going to talk a little bit about kind of where we, where we came from last year and where we're going this year. I don't, we don't have to.
Okay, while they're doing that, let me tell you about the KACC meeting this week and you can mark this down and Jennifer can send an invite to you. Uh, KACC will meet at Butler. Uh, the presidents will meet all day Friday, the thirty first, uh, until the middle of the afternoon and then the trustee representatives will join at about three. Um, but I would like to invite you to dinner Friday night, uh, at six o'clock in and over in the Kansas room. Uh, we will, we were meeting right up until six, we'll adjourn, uh, and, uh, dinner will be served, uh, six twenty, six thirty. You'll have time to get there and, uh, get a beverage if you want one. I don't know that Jan's even putting together, we aren't even going to put together a lot of hors d'oeuvres or anything like that because dinner is going to be served, uh, right away. And so, um, we'll have dinner. Uh, Matt's gonna do typically the whoever hosts the KACC meeting does a presentation on the college and you know, what's going on at the college. Um, I'm going to have Matt do a presentation on BCTV plus, uh, because it's because the other institutions are really excited about that. He did a presentation at the legislative lunch last fall and Heather asked if he would do that again for the presidents and for the trustees that are in attendance. So Matt will do about a ten minute presentation. Uh, we're gonna, uh, not annually, but every now and then KACC presents an award for, uh, the community college legislative champion uh, for that year. And so we'll do that, uh, that evening as well. And then Saturday morning, uh, uh, again, in the Kansas room, uh, seven o'clock breakfast starts and seven, at seven thirty, uh, we have from seven thirty to eight thirty, the South Central Kansas Legislative Breakfast. And she said today that she has seven, um, legislators that have responded that they will be there. She didn't tell me who, um, but, uh, come at seven for breakfast and for, um, legislative, um, discussion from seven to eight thirty if you want to. And I'll have Jennifer send an email invite out for you. Um, so you've got it on your calendars and stuff, but, um, exec, the VPs have been invited to dinner on Friday night as well. And, um, so it'll be Jan's serving her famous smoked beef tenderloin, which is our standard, you know, fancy dinner for guests and stuff. So it'll be good. Yeah, come if you can.
So the trustees on Friday at three o'clock, is that?
It's just, I mean, you can come if you want to. It's really for the representative, which is who's Mary Martha, but you, you're welcome to come if you want to. Um, but, uh, you don't have to. It's the, it's the presidents and then the trustee representatives, the KACC reps that are typically there, that are there.
And then after the legislative breakfast?
It's business meeting and stuff, but you guys don't have to stay. Again, come, come for breakfast and then you can leave. So. She's got, uh, she's got a number of things on the, uh, there's boardmanship one-on-one, best practices, uh, Ji-Hong Lee, who's the present CEO of ACCT is joining our meeting. Uh, and he'll be, he'll be at our meeting. Uh, there's an HLC presentation. I don't know what that's about. Best practices, uh, in board governance and then, uh, business meeting, um, a school, the annual budget, stuff like that. Done by eleven thirty. Okay. Okay. That's all I know. It's about that.
Okay.
Shall we take a break? Yeah. So, um, some of you may remember and some of you may not, but IMA is our brokerage firm that works with us, um, on all things health insurance and benefits, uh, related. And today we have Vanessa and Christie that are here with us to go through our renewals. We've been working on these for uh, several weeks, six weeks maybe, and gathering our data. Generally our renewals come available. We start, actually start accumulating the data. We need to cite a renewal in April. We get it from Blue Cross Blue Shield and the other providers. We go to market if we need to, those type of things. So we have, um, met with our insurance committee and they asked us to look at a few different options available to make our plan, um, a little better for, for everyone. We have a great plan, but we can improve on it always. So we looked at, um, taking into consideration a few plan changes to try, that might be appealing to help save the employees money at the point of service. So we're going to talk about those. Um, we're not here to ask you to make a vote or decision today. Basically what I will bring back to you in the future is what we'll be looking at as far as the premium contribution by the college as far as the cost of, of what these plans cost. And, um, I'm, I'm really excited to tell you that last year we had a pretty significant increase and this year is nothing like that. So I'm very, um, happy with the renewal that we received. And so I'm gonna let, um, Vanessa and Christie tell you a little bit more about that.
Hi, everyone. It's good to see some of you again. As Shelley said, I'm Vanessa Keith, my account executive at IMA. I work with the county or the college for, um, all things benefits related, especially on the strategic side. Um, I do long-term, short-term strategic planning and work with a team of individuals at IMA to bring the best services available to our kind of community college. Um, if you look on page one, you'll see the renewals that we had available this year. Um, the only renewals that we're talking about today are the health plan. The dental plan, which saw just a slight increase. The vision plan came in at a rate pass. Um, we haven't received that yet, but we've gotten verbal, but there's no change to rates on the vision plan. And then, um, the short-term disability plan was up for renewal this year. So we did get an increase on the voluntary short-term disability plan. Page three. This is looking at budget as Shelley works with teams internally on budget. We just wanted to show you how you're running so far this year. What you're looking at is from the left to the right, total fixed costs. So remember you are self-funded. You have, um, administrative fees and stop-loss fees that make up fixed costs. And then you have claims that make up the remainder of the total cost. So B represents your total fixed cost. C represents your total net paid claims in medical and RX. Column D is an indicator. So expected is the hundred percent line. That's where we expect you to run. And then column E is just B and C added together. So that's your total actual cost. Column F is the estimation of the employee contribution. Column G is the estimation of the college's contribution and you take E minus F or total to get G. Sorry, took a minute. Um, and then total budgeted cost is H. If you look at that versus total actual cost, you'll see that there is a few months with deficits. So twenty-five thousand dollars nine, five, twenty-five thousand nine oh eight in October. Ran it a deficit, but by the, by and large, you ran at a surplus for the first six months of the health plan. So this is October through March. Um, that surplus total is about four hundred and twenty-six thousand nine hundred seventy-two. Now, this isn't actual realized for the end of the plan year. We're in the, right in the middle of a plan year. Um, we wouldn't want to utilize those dollars irresponsibly. Um, but you are in a good position this year, whereas last year we were in a negative surplus situation. Um, the total reserve balance is estimated at one million, eight hundred fifty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars. That's the total reserve balance. If you add up the last three years plus the reserve fund that was started at one point five million. We did start an international prescription drug sourcing program this last year, um, starting, this says nine-one, but it's actually started ten-one. The calls to members went out nine-one. Um, what this is, is a program where we saw, actually source specialty or high-cost medications internationally right now through a Canadian pharmacy. It does cut the cost pretty substantially. Um, if had you remained just sourcing these drugs through Blue Cross Blue Shield, it would have been estimated at that one hundred forty-three, five eighty-two. That would have been what you would've spent as a college. Um, right now you're, you've spent sixty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars. Um, there is a shared service fee for the program, which is that sixteen to sixty-seven, which gets you to that six, six, sixty thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars on that net savings. Um, so we are in a good savings potential on that program. Um, we're only six months in. Everybody gets prescriptions and starts rolling as those first six months come. So we're in a good position for, with a forty-two percent net savings. We're in a good position with that program.
I might just add on that if you don't mind Vanessa.
Yeah, of course.
Um, this only is for certain types of drugs. So it, it's really the most expensive drugs. And so they get, that we're looking to outsource to Canada or the UK or one of those places. Right now I think you're using Canada.
We're using Canada.
Yeah.
Yep.
And we could get the drugs so much cheaper there. But so this is not for every drug that goes through our formulary or that is prescribed through Blue Cross Blue Shield's formulary. It's really targeting certain high-cost drugs that really impact our plan. So currently our pharmacy spend as compared to our medical claim spend, our pharmacy spend is about, I think it's like sixty-two percent of our, our total budget spent on claims in the year. So it's very, very high on the pharmacy side. So that's why we tried to take some measures to help cut costs. And one of the, what I think is probably one of the neatest things about this particular program is that it goes to the employee cost free. So they don't have to pay any deductible. They don't have to pay any, uh, co-pay for this drug to be outsourced and it saves us money. So it comes out of our plan expense and is paid through this and, um, saves us a bunch of money on those high-cost drugs.
Thank you, Shelley. Thank you. Um, it's also a voluntary program. We've got about fifty percent participation. We are working on increasing that participation through education through the HR team. Now to renewal options. So we have the medical renewal this year, but there were some options that were requested to show, um, improvements to benefits that would impact the rates in a small way, um, but enrich the benefits in a way that would be effective for continued, um, employee support of the benefit plan. Um, the renewal itself came in at a nine point eight percent. Um, that's about six hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars in total. Um, the options that we have, I will go through in a little more detail, um, in the next couple of pages. Just know they're between ten point one percent increase and an eleven percent increase overall between the few options that we have shown. If you flip to the next page. This is showing you the exact same thing, not in chart form. So if you're a numbers person and you want to see all the numbers and how we get there. Um, if you look at that red box, we always use expected as the indicator of how you're going to run because that's for all intents and purposes, the hundred percent line. So what we're looking at is your expected currently per year versus what we expect you to run for the next year. And so that nine point eight percent is the box that's highlighted. That's the renewal. At the top there, you'll see those are fixed costs in the gray boxes. So it's your stop-loss fees and your administrative fees. And then you follow that down into a monthly and annualization. And then you'll see that transition down into the next expected section where we add in the claims cost. So we're going to add in claims after we've gotten the fixed costs. And that's how you get to that nine point eight percent increase at six hundred and fifteen, uh, six hundred fifteen thousand, six sixty-five. Again, we have options. I'd like to look at them visually, probably a bit easier than just looking at the numbers. So if you go to page seven, the request from the college was to find options that could enrich benefits in a way that is positive employees without costing the college too much more money when it came to the renewal. So what we have shown here on page seven is a posit, a positive change to the office visit co-pay. So you'll see blue highlights. On the left-hand side is your current plan design. So the first three columns is what you are currently have. And then on the right, those three columns are your benefits that are proposed. You'll see the blue highlights on twenty-five and fifty. Those are your office visit co-pays. So right now they're thirty dollars for a primary care, sixty dollars for a specialist visit. What we're proposing is twenty-five dollars for primary care and fifty dollars for specialists. That is below benchmark, industry benchmark right now. Um, we've, another change is the urgent care facility. So if you'll travel down to the next folded blue, um, number of thirty dollars, right now that's seventy-five dollars. That'd be a huge win for your employees. Urgent cares are used pretty much as much as primary care physician offices are now because they have the availability for walk-in. Um, so that would be a huge win for your employees. Um, with that, to keep the actuarial value kind of equal, um, we did, and recommend increasing the ER co-pay to the market benchmark, which is two hundred and fifty dollars from two hundred dollars. Um, you'll follow down to outpatient mental health and substance abuse as well as spinal manipulation. Those two changes just follow the primary care physician and the specialist visit respectively. That would be a final projected renewal at ten point one percent. Get a little more complicated on the next page. Um, so again, the first three columns are your benefits as they stand today. Um, this is a proposal to add a richer benefit option, um, to the left-hand side of the new section. You'll see a five hundred dollar deductible plan. Um, so that wouldn't replace the three options we have. It would be in conjunction with the three options that you have currently. Um, that is in conjunction with the office visit changes that I reviewed on the last page. And that final projected renewal is at a ten point three percent. Now, we actuarially can model as much as we want and we can assess and we can assume from a underwriting perspective, what the benefit change, projected benefit change total will be. You do have quite a few people on your plan, that being members, so employees, spouses or dependents that have met either at five hundred dollars of total out-of-pocket costs or between five hundred and fifteen hundred dollars, which is the difference between the, that option and the fifteen hundred dollar option you have. So we will, I do expect to see a little more claims cost than is reflected in the actuarial model. Um, so long-term, I do expect this plan to run a little bit higher than its actuarially spread. Christie, you have any thoughts there? Hey, page nine. Is easier because I can say it's the exact same thing, but what we're doing on this page is lowering the out-of-pocket costs on the three options from six thousand dollars to five thousand dollars. So reducing the total out-of-pocket if someone has a catastrophic event or does use the health plan pretty frequently, reducing the total amount that they spend that year by a thousand dollars. And that is going to be the highest at eleven percent, um, from, from the, um, currently. And then finally, we have the last option, which is combining, remember the first option that was the office visit co-pays, combining that with a reduction of the total out-of-pocket cost to five thousand dollars from six thousand dollars. And that final renewal production's at ten point seven percent. Um, I mentioned accumulators on page eleven. This is just a visual. What we're looking at here is actual members on your plan and how much out-of-pocket spend they have incurred throughout the year. Um, right now, there's about four hundred or four hundred and three that have under five hundred dollars in total charges out of eight hundred and one. Um, a hundred and five of them have between five hundred and a thousand dollars and that they've paid. That's about thirteen percent of your, of your total membership. Sixty-nine percent of them have between a thousand and fifteen hundred dollars, which is about eight point six percent of your membership. So if we introduce that five hundred dollar plan, there are, there's twenty-one percent of the population that is going to either be at or has met in this last year. The delta between your five hundred dollar deductible and your fifteen hundred dollar deductible. And then what brought, that brought us to this was the benchmarking. So from a benchmark perspective, from a cost for the employees, you guys are doing really well. Um, you've kept the cost very low for the employees. The benefits themselves, a fifteen hundred dollar plan being a, what you call a buy-up, where it's your richest option, isn't out of the ballpark at all. Um, that's what you have right now. And that's the, that's the benchmark plan in the market right now is fifteen hundred dollar deductible. Um, you have a three thousand dollar deductible and a thirty-five hundred dollar high deductible health plan. Um, the three thousand dollar deductible is compared to the fifteen hundred dollar deductible benchmark option. Your qualified high deductible health plan is a thirty-five hundred dollar deductible. It says it versus a three thousand dollar. Don't worry about that. This year everybody's having to change to thirty-two hundred. So you're not too far off. You're getting even closer to where the benchmark will land in the next year. Um, from an out-of-pocket perspective, one of the changes that we mapped was because of the out-of-pocket being a thousand dollars higher than benchmark. Um, co-insurance is right online with the market. Your primary care physician visit is rich. It's still richer than the market, but those are dollars that most of the employees are going to see. If they're not on the qualified high deductible health plan, the first dollars people see are those out, those office visit co-pays for primary care and specialists. Um, you see your specialist co-pay is just a little bit higher. That fifty dollars is what we modeled as the benchmark. Um, from an ER co-pay perspective, benchmark is two fifty, which is why we recommended that two hundred and fifty dollar ER benchmark. And then your prescription drug co-pays are right in line with benchmark. Um, you go down to that table below. These are the two, option one and option two. You'll see the average employee only contribution and the average monthly family contribution. That's what the employees are paying. That is richer than benchmark. Um, total cost is a little bit higher than benchmark. The, the college has had some rough years in the last couple of years when it comes to total costs. Um, the right sizing though, we're right, right, right around, um, trend, a couple of points above trend right now on the renewal this year. And then ancillary renewals, just quickly. Dental renewal came in at a two point eight percent increase. It's about seventy-six hundred dollars in total. Um, the college is part of a consortium plan with Delta. The plan averages between a rate pass being no impact rates to a three percent increase overall. Um, we've looked at other options, but the staying in that consortium plan still is the best option with Delta Dental. Um, and then the voluntary short-term disability says it's twenty-three point nine percent, but we're talking about small dollars. Um, we're looking at three thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars annually um, on that. And that is a manual increase due to market change.
And that, sorry, that last one, the, the voluntary and disability, um, that is an employee-paid benefit. We don't pay for their premiums on that. It's just an increase to them for that, for that line of coverage.
Questions?
Yeah. Good. Well, I, I just see, I see Blue Cross Blue Shield. I'm sorry. This is my first turn.
Yeah.
Did we submit to other insurance companies or we committed to Blue Cross?
We looked last year, um, at other options on the market. Um, it didn't financially make sense. So because of where the budget was and where the renewal was going to be, um, along with some other factors tied to negotiations, we decided to remain with Blue Cross this year and keep, stick with the Blue Cross option.
There are a couple of double, other companies that we've looked at that service our area. Um, but we're in a, we went self-funded. This is our third year self-funding. And so they basically Blue Cross Blue Shield administrates all of our claims. So at the point of service, and then they send us the bill to pay the claim, but, but we're self-funding that whole process and paying them for those administrative services. So when we looked at the, we look at others, they have to be able to do what Blue Cross does for us. Yeah. And they are pretty much the leader in that area, but, but we, we try and market frequently. Yeah.
And we do intend to do a full marketing project this next year as well, since we didn't do a full marketing project this year. We did one last year.
Aetna and United are the only other two options.
Those are really the options that have the best network and the locations that you're at. Um, now there's a plethora of ways to get there. Um, and that's really what the large marketing project that we're going to do this next year was, will look like.
The, um, on page six, that nine point eight percent increase. That's what the college pays for the administration.
That's, that's the nine point eight is the entire increase for both claims and our fixed cost. And the fixed cost include our administrative fees to Blue Cross. And then also for the stop-loss insurance, because anything that goes over seventy-five thousand automatically goes into this insurance pool to be paid out. And then, um, any fees that we paid IMA for their services are all in the fixed cost. And so then the claims are that which comes at point of service from people going to the, to the doctor, we pay for those as well. And so that nine point eight includes both our fixed cost and the claims at expected increases for the year.
It's also employer and employee. It's not split between the employer and the employee at this point.
Right. So they, they talk about it. Nine point eight is the total cost increase projected based on the renewal and a portion of that is paid by the college and a portion is paid by the employee. So we budgeted a certain amount for our health insurance increases for twenty twenty-five, which is what's, this will be the plan year it's going into. And, um, I believe we can stay within what we asked for, for the budget.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, three hundred and eighty-one employees and eight hundred and one members. That's because spouses are members that have relatives and children.
Yep. Looking at belly buttons.
There's, uh, six point nine million. Is that the amount the college is spending in years?
That's the combined cost. So that's, that would be split between the college and the employees.
What's the college paying out of that total?
So do you have a, well.
Let's say it's eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven percent is about what we pay.
About eighteen thousand dollars per employee of a healthcare.
Yeah. So I think the, uh, um, the family plan is currently running about twenty grand on, for us, for the college. And then I think it's like eighteen and some change for employee plus one. And it jumps down to about, I think, eight thousand for, uh, single coverage.
So we pay eighty-seven percent of the family coverage?
We pay, yes. Well, it's not exactly, it's, it's overall plan cost. So if you're on a family plan, it's usually more like the employees paying twenty-two percent of that cost. So it, it's about that balance and that delta. But overall, for the entire plan, it's about an eight, uh, eighty-seven thirteen split.
So, uh, at the six fifteen, our piece of that's going to be about five hundred and thirty-five. And then, yeah. Do we, what hap, and that, does that take into consideration the ones that choose to do the five hundred and thirty-five?
The five hundred dollar deductible would be a buy-up plan, meaning they'll have to pay more for that plan. So we'll pay the same regardless of what plan they're in, but it'll be more expensive if they choose the five hundred dollar deductible for that, for the employee. We're not going to bear the brunt of that cost.
That we had a request for, did you say at one point?
There are several things that were requested and, um, that, um, we were listening to some of the, um, negotiations, demands and so forth, but what people were asking for. But we also felt like at a minimal cost, we could do some of these things. You know, we, we've kind of gone back and forth, Vanessa and I have about the five hundred dollar deductible. That would be really nice. And a lot of people, you know, do complain about a fifteen hundred dollar deductible, but, um, five hundred dollar deductible can be difficult to sustain over a long run. So, um, while I like the idea of it, I'm not sure we'd be able to keep it intact for year over year over year. So, um, these are options is what they presented me with. I wanted options. I wanted to be able to improve the plan design a little bit to keep some people thinking, yeah, they're doing good by us, especially at the point of service. If they can pay less when they go to the doctor, five dollars less is, doesn't seem like a lot maybe to you and me, but it's going to seem like a lot to somebody. And so those little things help and they add up. And if we can, um, you know, work with a little bit lower deductible like a five hundred, but it's going to cost them more money in their paycheck to, to, to take the five hundred dollar deductible. So I'm going to work out some rate comparisons about how that looks to the premium side. Um, and my goal, as I said before, is to stay within the amount that we've budgeted for twenty-five. And I believe that for the college, um, that we can do that.
Budget we haven't improved yet, possibly.
The part, yes, what we've anticipated, we would need, yeah.
This is currently a ten percent increase with no burden on any employees of any increase on their end of the college. No, it'll be.
There'll be some.
Eighty-seven percent of the increase will be on us.
Historically, that's what it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the plan is sin-free. The, some of those were possible. And the plan is sin free, the, some of those requests that have to be changed.
Yeah, so, so we renew our plan for everyone in August, they have to sign up in August, that's where we have our open enrollment. And so we have to know what they're gonna pay. And so um, we'll be meeting, I'll be having some, I'll be able to get these rates and all of this kind of figured out. Here in the next couple of weeks, and um, they weren't gonna need to meet with the um, negotiating team. Who identify that, cause that's a negotiated compensation item. So we can't just say this is what we're gonna pay and everybody gets this. Um, and then we'll bring that before to you and say, this is, this is kind of what we're looking at, here's where we think we can be. Um, is this okay? And then we'll go to the um, negotiating team with that. But July board meeting, I have to have something approved. Because we'll have to take it and get it all set up in the systems and be ready for open enrollment. So the employees know what they're gonna pay for their health care expenses. Um, so last year, I think you might remember uh, that we ended up doing an MOU with the, with the negotiating team. Uh, to make it so that, made sure that the faculty and, and the professional employees didn't have to pay more. Than everybody else was paying, and it was gonna be a lot um, to be able to get their insurance in on time too, and we may have to do that again this year. So that's where we're at.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, thank you for your time, thank you. Thank you so, so much, we appreciate you coming out tonight and waiting for me. That's okay, that's all right, thanks, thanks so much, I appreciate you.
Okay, uh, now Heather, Phil and Jessica. Are going to uh, talk to us about some of the analytics they use to determine. Classes, renewals, class sizes and so forth, so.
Yeah.
Gonna turn it over to them directly.
Yeah.
Um, Zach's gonna help us as well, so. Um, you know, we've, some of this information won't be new to you, uh, some of it has been requested. Uh, there've been questions over time that have been asked. That we've kind of provided information in pockets from different departments about what we're doing, um, and. First and foremost, we want you to know, we hear, right, we're listening, we hear the concerns that um, are shared in terms of. You know, enrollment decline or um, you know, when I look at this list of classes, I see a small class size or. You know, things of that nature, so we wanted to provide some information for you, again, some of it will be uh, stuff you've, you've received or heard before. Um, but it's important, we think that you hear it collectively and not in pockets. So because it takes all of us working together in these systems and these processes to serve our students and to do what we do. So that being said, we have like thirty minutes, and we have a lot of information, so um. We know this will prompt some questions, so if, if you'll just jot them down, we have a couple of spots where we're gonna pause. To allow for questions, but for the sake of time and getting through the information, because we feel that collectively it's important to hear all of it. Um, we're gonna try to move along until we get to those breaking points to, to stop and take questions, so. Um, the other thing that we want to point out too is, and you'll hear it throughout the information that we share. Is that you as a board have approved things over time. That you may not realize are playing a huge role in the decisions that we're making and the way that we're able to analyze our data. So throughout the presentation, you're gonna hear about that as well, so we're grateful for the things that you have supported along the way. And maybe through this presentation, you'll learn about some things that you approved. That maybe you didn't realize how they were being used, so with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jessica to start us off.
Thanks Heather.
All right, good evening. Um, so one of the first things that I wanted to share is that um, from an enrollment standpoint, we do monitor. Our enrollment on a regular basis, and what we do is uh, we review the, the enrollment daily. And track the pacing of our enrollment compared to the date in the enrollment cycle. So um, just for example, right now, as of today, summer is up three point nine percent credit hours. Um, fall is up one point six percent in credit hours. So those are the numbers that we're really excited about, there's a lot of factors that go into those things. But as those numbers change, we're constantly watching them and we're also making adjustments. We may be adding another enrollment event or um, you know, reaching out to students another time or texting, things like that. Um, so wanted you to be aware of that. Also, um, Kelly did share. Um, from a marketing perspective, last March and August. That the marketing department really focuses on brand awareness, they focus on lead generation. For some of our targeted populations, um, they also uh, have shared that. They have as a result had increased impressions and conversions on social media platforms, also the website. You know, landing pages and um, webpage views are also up. So we, we meet with marketing on a regular basis. And uh, we talk, we really, we strategize um. On enrollment and we, we talk about, okay, here's the events that we have coming up, we need your help with, with these certain things. Um, like for example, maybe you've seen, we have our orientation enrollment day events, and those are on social media. Um, and we also target specific populations. I really don't want to get into specific strategies because this is a public meeting. And we know that others will be able to view this later, and we don't want our competitors to see all of the initiatives that we're taking on. Um, but just wanted to highlight some of the things that um, you've done. So you supported our work with strategic higher education. Uh, and the creation of enrollment coaches. So as a result, we're focusing on specific programs, we're setting goals and we're monitoring the pace of enrollment. Towards our goals. You also supported, and I think you're familiar with Motomatic. Um, that's a company that we've been working with since fall of twenty one. And our recent contract with Motomatic is a subscription based service, which means that we're, we're always on. In front of our prospective and our current students. And to date, our partnership has resulted in a three point five times return on investment. So that's definitely something that we want to continue to do. Um, we also just recently implemented Campus Logic. And that is a software that will help us deliver financial aid processes and information in a way that students have come to expect. We went live with that just this month. Um, the college, colleges that use Campus Logic. Report an increase in student and staff satisfaction as a result of going to that particular tool. We really are excited about where that will be able to take us in the future. We also focus on Kansas Promise programs. Um, the, the Kansas Promise Scholarship started back in twenty twenty one, twenty two. And that first year, we had a hundred and forty three students received the scholarship. The next year, twenty two, twenty three, we had two hundred and forty eight students receive it. And so far for this year, we have two hundred and ninety six students receiving the scholarship. So that is a real focus for us, we are uh, consciously, we're reaching out to those students as we want to see those numbers increase. So as a result of all these things that we're doing, um, we did see an increase in Kansas Promise Program enrollment. Our online enrollment has increased twenty percent from fall of nineteen to fall of twenty three. Our high school enrollment has increased one point five percent from fall of twenty two to fall of twenty three. And our international credit hours have increased thirty four percent from fall of twenty two to fall of twenty three. So I think that those are some significant numbers that I wanted to make sure that you were all aware of. And I really think the decision that you made to hold tuition study this year sends a positive message to our students. And will help encourage enrollment, um, and also helps us use that, we'll be able to use that as a recruitment tool.
And I, I want to point out that for a Butler student. They can come here for ninety nine dollars a credit hour versus. Which to state at two hundred and fifty dollars a credit hour is what they're asking from the Board of Regents. That's a savings.
And yeah, we are hearing that the Regents institutions are going to be increasing their tuition again. So we'll see where they land, that they may come back and, and tell them they need to change, but we are definitely a better option when it comes to cost. So are there any uh, questions for me before I turn it over?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the metrics that you were using to measure the success of she, you, do you have this established yet?
We are working on that right now, um, we are comparing right now our enrollment to our day one. Numbers for fall. So I don't have uh, final numbers to give you, but that's what we're looking at right now for our pacing.
Thank you.
Would you bring that back to us by the June meeting or will it be after that?
Um, I feel like the best thing for us to do would be to wait for the full enrollment cycle. So wait for after day one, so we can compare day one to day one. Yes. I, I think I'll turn it over to.
In the future, I made this request before, but if you guys are giving this along, let me update it, so we could have a copy that we could. We're all over here scribbling furiously, twenty percent bit, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty three, I'm, I'm getting a little behind, I'm, behind on my college not taking. Or even a copy later would be great to. If you have one on hand, if you don't create.
Be great, yeah.
My shorthand skills have definitely suffered over the years.
Okay, so um, I'm gonna talk about AdAstra for a second, I know you guys get. You hear AdAstra all the time, so I'm gonna kind of explain what AdAstra is and what it does. Um, so first of all, AdAstra is a new tool that we um, just finished implementing. Um, uh, at the beginning of the spring semester, um, and it is building and maintaining our academic schedule. Um, so other than that, we also have a prediction analysis, which is predicting um. Our enrollment based off of our pathways, um, and it's, it is predicting um, how many courses we need to offer. In each set, um, or how many sections we need to operate with each course, and so when we roll the term. Um, it bases that information, do we need to make adjustments, um, either adding or subtracting courses? Or I mean, sections, um, and then after we get done with that prediction analysis, we have the monitoring tool. That helps us monitor the enrollment, um, and decide and notify us if we are gaining enrollment in certain areas. Where we might need to add sections or reduce sections, um, going, um, going through the enrollment um, timeframe. And then um, the biggest thing with AdAstra is the more we use it, the smarter it gets. Um, right now, we have some data that is just very little, um, new data that is, we're adding to it every semester. And so the longer, you know, in a year from now, we're gonna have a lot more data that we can look at for um, and. You know, looking at past history and going forward, um, the other big thing is um. This spring twenty five is our first term that we've been able to use the tool from beginning to finish. So from rolling the schedule all the way until um, classes begin, so this will be the. First time we get to see and, you know, work out any glitches along the way as well, so. Any questions?
Just, so you said you started spring two thousand four using?
No, we finished implementation of the spring of twenty four, um, so we, we've done that. Twenty twenty four, twenty twenty four, so you guys approved it um, a little over a year ago. Um, and then we implemented it, and so right now, this spring semester, we've been going through, and I've been training the deans, all the leading chairs. And also like all the division admins or what we call our academic support team, um, that are in there working in the schedule at all times. So I've been training them on how to use um, AdAstra. And um, so we're prepared and ready to use it this whole term for spring twenty, um, spring twenty five.
It's part of the software also where teachers can reach out to their students who aren't attending or.
No, that would be a B, so, just another A name.
Okay, so we thought it was important to share more about AdAstra because we do talk about it a lot, but. It does a lot more than even the data that we've uh, provided you over the last month or so. Um, so I wanted to dive in a little bit um, to, into how we build and maintain our schedule. And so Zach spoke to how AdAstra informs us. Um, but it, it really does take our collective team, our administrative assistants, our deans, associate deans, advising. Um, we are looking at that schedule on a regular basis. I think I've shared with you before, we get an email to our inbox every single day that tells us in the current term that we're enrolling. What our seat capacities are, so it's really difficult not to look at it when it lands in your inbox every single morning. Um, so uh, Zach spoke a little bit about spring twenty twenty five, that's how far in advance we're planning. We're already working on the spring schedule, fall is set, we're enrolling for it. Um, and so as that schedule, he talked about the schedule rolls, so spring twenty four is being rolled. To spring twenty five, with the exception of classes that we canceled, we do not roll any class that we cancel in the schedule. If we didn't need it, then the likelihood of us needing it now is pretty slim. Okay, then our deans and associate deans, we work together to, again, using that AdAstra data. In the past, what we would do is say, okay, this is what we offered last year, let's kind of clean it up, because. That would tell us our trend, we know how we ended last spring, so let's kind of do something similar this spring. What AdAstra does is takes into account where students are in their degree program, and it tells us, no. Based on your degree pathways, these are what students need. Um, and which is super helpful because we know that the majority of our students are part-time right now, right? So that's gonna change what students need, because they're not taking them at a full, a full-time student pace. Um, so we take that data, we monitor, well, we clean up the schedule first of all, get it ready. Um, to be published to our students, and then the advisors start the enrollment process. And we're able to stay connected, um, AdAstra provides us some data, right, of here's your fill rates, they show up in our email inbox every single day. So we know, hey, I probably need another gen psych on the schedule, cause there's maybe only two or three seats left. So that's telling us from a data perspective, but we also have feedback from Jessica's team who says, hey, we're getting a lot of students in, and they're asking for this class specifically. Or, you know, we're looking at it and a lot of students are requesting online or, and over in the evening, and we don't have any on the schedule. So we're able to use the data from our software, but also what our students are telling us that they want. Um, because we know if we don't build it, when they need it, when they can take it, because they are part-time, they're taking care of families or loved ones or working. Um, they'll go somewhere else where that meets that need, so it's not as simple as just. Hey, these programs have these classes, here's the time it's offered, take it or leave it, all right, we, we try to build it. Um, so that the students, it meets them where they are, uh, which is right in line with the mission of what we do. Um, as we get closer to the start of a semester, we're starting to look, Zach will pull that information from AdAstra, we're looking at the enrollment numbers. Anything that sits below seven students, we're starting to ask our deans and associate deans, look at these. Where, you know, do we absolutely need this class, is there somewhere else we can move these students? And so. That's where our cancellations come in. We work again really closely with Jessica's team, which I'm gonna share some information here in a little bit about the impact of those efforts. But we work together to try to move students to a section, um, sometimes it's a different class, sometimes it's the same class, just depends. You know, on the situation, um, but if we cancel those sections. Or I guess I should say, if we allow sections to run with fewer than seven students. It is an extenuating circumstance, it's not the, the norm. And some of those circumstances are, maybe this section is part of a full-time faculty members load, and we have to guarantee them a certain number of credit hours. So if we can't, we still have to give that, those credit hours to that full-time faculty member, so canceling it doesn't do us any good, we still have to find. Those credit hours. Um, the, one of the biggest examples that we see, the most frequent, is that students need that class to graduate. And so if we cancel it, we're delaying their graduation date. Um, it affects our completion, it affects their perspective and opinion of Butler. But also it can impact other things, like Jessica referenced Kansas. But also it can impact other things like Jessica referenced Kansas Promise. If we have a student on the Kansas Promise Scholarship. They are given money, right, it's a it's a scholarship. If they complete their program within a certain timeframe, and if they don't, it turns into a loan. So if we have students on the Kansas Promise Scholarship. Uh, we've done it out at EDCF with the prison, we have to guarantee that students move through at a certain pace to maintain our eligibility for second chance PEL. If we don't do those things and get those students through. We're putting their. The financial burden on them where they've earned a scholarship prior to that. So those are some examples, um. Zach's gonna share with you some. Some of the data, just so you know what we're looking at, and also to see some of the trends since we've started using the tool of how we've used it. To um make an informed decision on what we cancel, what we allow to run and things like that.
So here is um. This is an AdAstra report that um I pulled uh regarding um enrollment ratios based off of. Um, total courses, total sections, total enrollment um for um each semester. Um, so one of the things that you will notice that, you know, when we have decided to start. Um, not roll rolling each term our canceled classes um from term to term. Um, and they now automatically delete, you can see that we have reduced our total sections offered. Um, and then that has also increased our overall enrollment ratio as well. Um, so there are, you know, that's just one of those things that we have, really, we've. Done it for a short amount of time here that we've been implementing, um, and so far it has been positive um. Effects from doing that, um, and just so you, just kind of a brief, so courses are what the. What the course is if it's an EG one O one class, so a comp one class, so. Just so you know, so then the sections would be how many sections we're offering of that exact course, um. And then, so our average sections per course right now, um, for like spring twenty four were two. Um, with our average enrollment um per course at twenty eight and average um enrollment per section was fourteen. With an enrollment ratio of sixty six percent. Is there any questions about this data I could answer?
When you say total enrollment, total seats available, is that credit hour enrollment?
Uh, no.
It's obviously not people. It's not students because we only got. Then column D, I guess.
That's this.
Total enrollment would be the seats taken. Total available would be the total amount we offered.
So seats, it's not headcount, it's not credit hours, it's enrollment, so I I can.
Times credit hours.
Classes, so, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So the available seats would be the max we had offered that semester.
And that's the actual number of seats.
That's oh, that's okay.
And this would, and this would be also different from ESOM's numbers like on twentieth day because these would be at the end of each of those terms. So this is going to justify any class, any students that have dropped. Um, and any of the late start classes, um, maybe that we added um after the twentieth day numbers were in. So that would be real time data at the end of.
Eldorado and Andover combined.
This is all, this is institution wide, this is everything.
The other questions before I move on?
Okay. It, you can. At Astra, we talk about being more real time, right? We know for reporting purposes, we stick pretty much to twentieth day, we're reporting any official number. This is just to show you, not an official number that we've sent to the state, nothing like that, it is. When we are monitoring enrollment. We're doing that on a daily basis, and so we're looking at the numbers as they are in that moment, so. As the numbers were in the system on the day that that Zach pulled this report. It it, that's where we ended up, and you can. To make it even more complex, we could talk about this all day long because the scheduling process is not, it's not simple. Um, even, you know, twentieth day numbers, we talk about um. Like our campuses in the Flint Hills, they work on a trimester schedule, so the twentieth day could be. Right in the middle of a term, it could be before a term started, so sometimes. What our actual count day isn't reflective of actual what our actual enrollment is over the course of a year for some of our sites. So I talked earlier about the um. The collaborative effort with between academics and student services. To help when we do have to cancel sections to try to retain as many of those students as we can. Um, nobody likes to get that call, right, that your class is canceled, sorry, we tried to, you know. Use this data to create sections that we know we're gonna make, um, doesn't always happen. So um, with that collaboration. Just uh an analysis of the spring twenty twenty four term. We dropped twenty twenty percent fewer credit hours than the last four spring terms. So um, the sk- the way we scheduled and the efforts. That that we, you know, put together to try to retain students has made a difference. Of the sixteen week classes that had eight to ten students in sixteen weeks is our standard, right, standard length. Um, we kept ten percent more of those sections. So that eight to ten mark we've learned is kind of the sweet spot because if you start canceling. That's why we kind of use a seven student cut. If you start canceling, then we really don't preserve those credit hours, but by saving that that ten percent. We preserved about four hundred credit hours of enrollment for the spring term. Um. So looking at the classes that we did cancel. Working with Jessica's team, and that is calling them. Finding classes in the schedule for them and working with them saying, hey, you still need this class, can we put you here? We were able to retain seventy six percent of the students that were dropped from a canceled section in the spring of twenty four. So um. That all being said, um, some of the conversation we've had has been, we we see an enrollment decline. We're still seeing these classes with low enrollment. Doesn't financially make sense, we're still seeing uh our staffing increase or stay flat. Um, so that's typically looking at a full time. Right, full time teaching. We are. Bound by a master agreement, right, in terms of how staffing works, full time to adjunct. So I wanted to share some information with you, first of all, first of all. Um, we're following the master agreement on the full time faculty staffing and things like that. If a full time faculty position becomes vacant for any reason. We do not simply repost that and fill it. We have conversations with our deans um at the VP's level to discuss. Do we still need this based on our enrollment? Um, is there a need somewhere else, right? Full time faculty positions are sometimes reallocated, so. This division doesn't have a need, but we really need someone here because the enrollment is has increased in in this area. And then we also um consider. Some areas, particularly like in the CTE area, it's really difficult, or nursing is a good example, it's difficult to find adjuncts. To teach those classes, and so if we get rid of a full time position. Then we're scrambling to find an instructor, so a lot of times we'll keep those, but we do review those every time one comes vacant. Um, and as you heard last month, there were, or this month, there were a lot, so uh lots of reviewing that's happened this year. So we're reviewing the full time, but I wanted to share some information that even I didn't know until we started looking into this, which is. Twenty thirteen is about the time that our enrollment really peaked, right, that was when. We had quite a few students, we had four hundred and eighty adjuncts at that time. If you go to twenty twenty. We have a four hundred and fifty nine, so reduce a little bit. And then if you look now, uh, twenty twenty four, we have three hundred and sixty eight. So we have, in addition to looking at those full time faculty positions and. Making adjustments based on our enrollment, we're also doing that with our adjunct staffing as well. So uh, any questions about that before I? Pass it on, okay?
Do you have this numbers for full time for those years?
For the full time, the full time staffing hasn't fluctuated a whole lot between a hundred and fifty five to a hundred and sixty, it's it's. Really stayed um quite steady, there's a couple of years where it's fluctuated, it's not, but. Uh, it hasn't fluctuated like a lot.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. But that's, it's difficult to show too, like the overall number hasn't changed a lot, but we've seen a lot change from this division to that or. Realocating to meet the need without having to add another position.
So that's kind of overall.
Yes. Okay, so we've talked a little bit about um those small class sizes, I'm gonna pass it off to Phil to talk about that in a little more detail, and then.
So uh, we know there has been concern about the variety of class sizes, so. We wanted to give a couple of examples of um programs that have. Uh, a variety of class sizes, so um, what we're going to look at is an example. Of a necessarily small course, um, uh, we have vocal ensembles, one of them is a cappella. Which uh you even have heard them perform recently, um. Acapella is a course that has four different sections, but they all meet together. Um, the in the total enrollment in that course uh recently has been thirteen students. But one thing you have to recognize is the, there's one faculty person that is being paid for one section. It's actually four sections in the course, but the faculty person is only being paid for one section.
Can you put that back there?
He's working on it.
Oh, okay.
That was the wrong, that was.
Oh, that was concert choir.
Well, both of them, there's two examples and one.
I'm just. Bear with me.
I was gonna say, I just got used to seeing it, you had it the perfect size too.
Yeah, just bear with me real quick.
You had it a bifocal size.
This, this is only one example, too, there's a variety of.
Well, and a variety of reasons why um. These kind of courses are essentially consolidated already. You finding?
Yeah, I guess it really.
Well. Okay, well, I'll talk about the other example, and then, because it's on the other end of the spectrum in terms of music. The concert choir, which is four sections in the same course. Um, that has an enrollment around eighty in the course. And again, uh, for a lo- large class like that, um, the faculty person is being paid for one section. So there is a big range in terms of what's actually going on.
This is such, they're all meeting at the same.
Right, right, right. And then welding and different, different other courses may be. Limited because of space available.
Say that again?
Courses like some welding courses and stuff like that, if there's only. Ten welders, well, then you can only have ten students in that.
Right. Well, so this example is, you want to talk more about it or? The. Acapella ensemble, for example, depending on what. What semester and what year you are in the program, you're gonna enroll in one, two, three, or four, right? We would not offer. These sections as standalone. With the exception of the one with eight students, right, we've talked about our priority number is seven. Those four sections, you can see have the same. Meeting time, same days, the same building, same room, they all meet together, they're paid as one section, but if you're just glancing at the schedule. It would appear that we're offering four sections and we're letting it run with three students in two of them. Or in three of them, and then. On the opposite end of that, concert choir is a requirement for every vocal music major, so that class is huge. Four sections, but they all meet the same time, same day, paid as one section.
Why is it four sections?
It, go ahead.
And and why is it not?
Yeah, be- because students um are in different places in. In terms of their progress through their enrollment, so. I might be a first semester freshman in the course or second semester freshman in the course or. A first semester sophomore or second semester sophomore, and they're all in the same group. And you can't get credit for the same course four times.
Oh, yeah.
Also, another factor of this, in terms of accreditation, we have to demonstrate that students are um. Progressing in terms of learning outcomes. The uh, the fourth semester sophomore has to be uh demonstrate. Uh, greater skill in terms of their learning outcomes, in terms of music, their music uh skills. So it's a very complicated system, but it's um something that we have to accommodate for the student's experience. Yep, so um, uh. Two years ago, the state required that all colleges and universities in the state system. Had to revise revise their gen ed program. Um, because Kansas finally was going to have a statewide gen ed program. And so we took that as an opportunity for us to review all of our AA and AS. Degree programs and what um, what the state requires. Is that there are currently seven categories of required gen ed coursework. And uh, one of the major revisions that we did previously. Um, we had two required categories in gen ed. And there were then nine optional categories that students could um. Pick from, and when you think through this example that we are giving, um, I would think. Um, of kind of an analogy with, you go to a restaurant and how big is their menu? How much of a menu do they have to maintain in terms of options that you're offering to? The customer or in this case, the student, so um. The gen ed program that we will um start in the fall. Has uh the gen ed coursework that students have to take. It's concentrated in their first three terms of coursework, that wasn't true in the past, um, so. In terms of how students would approach their gen ed, it was honestly kind of a little haphazard. Whereas being much more um channeled in terms of productive coursework. Than it has been in the past, this um serves our students by guaranteeing that if they um. Do the coursework in the seven categories, that they will have thirty four to thirty five. Hours of gen ed that will transfer to any public institution in the state. Um, it also allows students to take six to s- ten hours in their major. Because the seventh category in the gen ed coursework is uh determined by the institution. And so what Butler has done with the seventh category is we're telling students that they should take. Two courses in their major area, that has never been true in the past in terms of gen ed. So for instance, um, a art student can now take. Um, an art history class or a drawing class for gen ed credits, that's really to the advantage of our students. It also um streamlines the students' choices. The, because there's much more focus on that major area and less open ended gen ed. Course choices. It also is uh makes it very possible for us to streamline the coursework that we. Um, direct the student to picking, so I wanted to give you two examples, um, and uh. yeah, let's, let's go ahead and work, look at twenty-four, twenty-five.
You gotta make it a little bigger.
Please. Okay, scroll down. Well, you went too far, sorry.
Oh, it is.
Okay, so one thing I want to have you look at is we're immediately supplying much more detailed information for students in terms of what they need to do and what the choices they need to make in terms of their gen ed enrollment. We know that many of our students will at some point self advise. So it's very important for them to understand what target they're trying to hit in terms of gen ed. Our advisors have all been trained in detail in terms of these gen ed expectations from the state. But like I say, students will read this and want to advise themselves in terms of what courses they take. If you go down to that seven bucket framework and click, for instance, on bucket four, these are the courses that are accepted at the state level in terms of lab science for a student. And then go back. Now let's look at the pathway. Business administration, AS, has over four hundred students in the degree program. And in twenty-three, twenty-four, there was a, a selection of forty-two courses that students could take from. And it also had an element where it says, take a transferred gen ed class. So in the pathway, there were twelve required courses, but also a student had a choice from thirty-plus optional courses that they could take. We've streamlined that for twenty-four, twenty-five, that we're only saying we offer thirty courses. Twelve of them are required and only eighteen options.
Not sure we're on the same page here on this versus what you're saying.
What? Yeah, he's just showing the pathway of the courses that the students.
Pathway that's been streamlined.
Yeah, this is what streamlined.
So it's showing you the required courses that they have to take, and then they also have the option to take, you know, another one out of that, out of that bucket.
So.
Yes.
Zach, can you scroll up just a little bit more? I mean, scroll down, I'm sorry. Keep going, keep going. Stop. Okay, so it says, select one three-credit hours bucket, da-da-da-da. Speak to an advisor. Does that mean they've got to stop their enrollment process and speak to an advisor?
It, a, a student is always smart if they will talk to an advisor before they try to self advise. And, and bucket two, for instance, the state says a student can take public speaking or interpersonal communication. But depending on the transfer institution, some of the universities are saying students have to take public speaking. So we want the student to be smart in terms of their choices. So we're telling, speak to an advisor.
Got it.
You know, so the advisor can say, oh, well, you're going to Wichita State. You have to take public speaking. Oh, you're going to K-State. They don't care. So pick.
Okay.
Also, you will see it says preferred courses. That are, the preferred courses are the courses that the student in this degree program would be smartest to pick in terms of transfer.
Go down just a little bit, Zach, please. Thank you.
So for, for instance, in the third term for business administration, a student has to take personal finance. They have to take financial accounting, but they can choose to fulfill the bucket five, which is social and behavioral science. They, they can take either of those econ classes. So the other example that we could show is psych AA. Yeah, and go ahead and show. Yeah. So psych AA, which is over a hundred and thirty students in the degree program. In twenty-three, twenty-four, there was a selection for sixty-three courses. Eight of them were required and fifty-five of them were optional choices that the student could make. In twenty-four, twenty-five, we've only we have fifty-nine courses. So we haven't reduced that that much, but there's still eight required courses. But there is only fifty-one option, options of courses, but the, the big change in that degree program is in the fourth term, we've reduced their options from thirty-five to eighteen. So what this ends up doing in terms of working with a tool like AdAstra is we can predict what students will take much more easily. And also we give much better direction to them in terms of these transfer programs about how they will successfully and effectively transfer.
You have one grammatical error, uh, see and advisor.
Yep, we do.
Uh, this, it's starting to make sense.
So other, any other questions about this?
Okay. That's what we have for you tonight.
That looks a little bit, being compared probably when all of us went through college. I mean, to a certain degree, we knew we had to take English one oh one and one oh two, or whatever you called it, and, and speech one oh one and psychology one oh one. And, you know, you kind of kind of built, you know, and hope that you hit on the right cylinders.
Yeah.
But who, you know, until you really got an advisor that knew what they were doing, maybe your sophomore, into your sophomore year, did you really become that focused, you know, which is nice now because these kids can at least go online and, and have their focus and show their folks and things like that.
The intention also is to eliminate the need as much as possible for students to retake courses when they transfer, because that happens frequently.
Oh, yeah.
And to save them time and money. Those are all efforts that have, you know, that are part of this system move to create this gen ed initiative. The community colleges have gotten on board fairly quickly, and it's been a little hard for the university. Decide that they want to do this. We would be glad to provide the stats that we discussed.
Oh, good.
Some of them we were putting together. We're, we're busy. So some of them we were pulling together even before we walked over here this evening. So.
I was writing out a scrap paper like fifteen minutes.
We're glad to provide. It just, yeah, it took time to pull it together and pulled from a lot of different sources. So we, we can provide it for you and thank you for the opportunity to share it collectively. I think that's important. And just to let, I mean, to remind you all that an enrollment decline isn't something that we don't notice. Where we pay attention to it every day. It shows up in our inbox every day. And we're working as hard as we can to to make improvements and we've done that in some cases.
It shows, and I thank you.
Uh, speaking with an advisor, I've had six kids come here now. Never had a problem. They've always been super helpful. No matter what happened to the schedule, it's CM, it's magically fixed in no time.
Yeah.
It's very hard.
Yeah, we like to hear that. Thank you. Thank you. It's a big team effort. So, thanks, everybody.
Okay, uh, last, you know, we always try to figure out what we need to follow up on, and I do have the June eleventh meeting that we have to approve those qualifications. So keep that top of mind. And if you want to suggest changes, please get those to me. I had a note, can't read or understand my own note, but for June, I had topic to non-renew.
Yeah, that's the, that's potentially the personnel issue that we talked about in, in closed session, but we, we will have an exact session on the June agenda for further conversation about that.
Okay.
I have submitted a couple of questions.
Okay, for those, the.
Those were the four questions.
Okay, so I had that down too.
Yeah, and the the academic teams are digging into Forbes right now, talking to the deans, really, really digging into it. We still have some questions about the Forbes data and how what Forbes's definitions are for some of those categories. Heather and her team have a number of questions that they're getting together to work through with the Forbes representative. So.
Read consultation or something.
I don't know. I don't know. Yeah, we do, and we want to, I believe Kent and Isam could probably speak to this better than I can. We wanted to reserve that for more strategy and setting goals. So I actually emailed our questions to Forbes. They were willing to. One example, one of your questions was the release percentage. We have something called release time internally. But I don't know that that's a direct transfer in terms of how Forbes defines it. So there's some things like that that we want to clarify before we put the information out there because if the questions come up and we don't know what all factors into that, then we can't answer it adequately.
I'm gonna know her answers.
Okay. So I have that down for June, but I say it may not be June. Okay, then I have August or September, the she report, that comparison that you were asking about, Erin, your question. Right after, so August or September meeting.
Twentieth day is when, so that'll, that'll end up being September.
Okay. And then just a reminder, Kim had told me that she has sent us a budget email from Kent.
I have hard copies too.
And IS information email, because those are both things that we need to vote on in June. And then you have, you'll be getting your schedule for the ACC dinner.
Yeah.
I have one question for on your at Astra, I know it's like a snapshot of that day. Can you retroactively see what like the spring enrollment was day one versus becoming up spring enrollment day one? Compare apples to apples, or is it just kind of what it is today?
Yeah, there's, there's some comparison date where would you think you should, like snapshot, there's.
I would remember what it was on that day.
And we can look at like on the fifth day, like five days before start date.
Just to roll up. Trying to make sure that you.
If we wanted to talk about his information before official twentieth day, you would still know. It's like, hey, we're setting.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's a lot of.
Yeah, we, I mean, if we're going to report things, we want to stick to the information that comes from Isam's office, because that's what our funding is based off of, right, Isam? That's, I mean, that's the official number. Typically, when we bring information to you for budget purposes, for anything like that, we're bringing you twentieth day because that's the official reported number. That's not to say that we don't, I mean, we're looking at it daily. Could we provide enough? They, yes, we want to be careful about it. The other thing is we know this because we're, we live it every day, but when we look at enrollment today compared to last year at this day, we could have had two more enrollment events that we didn't have yet this year. And so there's a lot of little nuances mixed in there that it's like, whoa, oh, we're trending so far behind. But in our heads, we know. Oh, but we haven't had this date yet, this enrollment event or, or this code. Or, or we know high school enrollment hasn't been entered in the system yet because school ended a little bit later. There's so many different things that typically we want to reserve any sort of enrollment reporting to come from Isam's numbers.
Seems like sometimes occasionally in our meetings, if the trustees don't know twenty day numbers, it's like, you know, thought that we could do anything.
I would defer to Isam for twentieth day.
Or maybe just an email update to the trustees, the twenty-first day or twenty-fifth.
Okay, anything else for the follow-up on June or later that you can think of? So I have.
Have, well, we'll have IMA stuff. We will have Phil's monitoring monitoring report will be on the agenda. Trying to think, I had a couple of things on my list to.
The Microsoft deal.
Microsoft stuff will be on the consent agenda, so read through that. These are all, I mean, some of them are annual renewals. The, the only one that's new is the soft docs, but it's budgeted. And we have to do the soft docs implementation of that because we're currently using a, an outdated web application that's not going to be supported any longer. So IS has gone through all the work to, you know, decide that this is the best, best option for us to do.
I think I'm caught up on what we have. Anything else? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I don't think you have.
I have to, it's the work session.